All right, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Abingdon School Committee on Tuesday, June 20th, 2017 at Abington Town Hall, a Carter Hearing Room. Would everyone please stand for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to start off with a hearing of visitors. Is there anyone that has anything they'd like to share? Okay, moving on. Reading and approval of records, May 22nd, 2017, executive session. Does anyone have any comments, questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the executive session minutes of May 22nd, 2017.
I'll make that motion.
Someone want to second it?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. The minutes from May 22nd, 2017, the regular meeting minutes. Any corrections, changes, comments? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2017, as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Someone want to second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And going on to our minutes of May 23rd, 2017, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of May 23rd, 2017, as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Okay, we're moving on to our principals' reports. Jonathan Hawes is here to give us the Woodsdale Elementary School Improvement Plan.
Hello. Very excited to be here presenting my first school improvement plan to you guys. So, a lot of reflection and a lot of connection to the community, to the staff, and to the students themselves went into the construction of this plan. Obviously, this plan was constructed as a function of the Beaverbrook Elementary School School Council. Once I recognized that I would be moving forward as the principal of the Woodsdale School, we decided to involve Mike and who would, Laurie Corner, who would be a Beaverbrook staff member, moving along with me to Woodsdale, in some of the conversations about taking a look at what Catherine and I were looking to do at the elementary level and seeing how those practices could both overlap at both buildings and also be a little bit personalized for my building. I've set forth three goals for the 2017-2018 school year. Goal number one, on page six, is to implement practices to challenge, support, and celebrate the achievement of students and staff. One of the things that I'm really excited about, I've seen the power of it in my professional practice, and I've seen the power of it in place at schools throughout my professional network, is the responsive classrooms morning meeting. In conversations that were with the community, in surveys from the community, and as a part of our school council, we talk a lot about how can we connect instruction and the socio-emotional needs of our students and reflect upon whether the community is telling us we're doing a good job of that, not enough of that, or, well, good job or not enough of that. So, I feel like implementing morning meeting is going to be a powerful thing at Woodsdale School. It becomes part of our school climate and part of our school culture. The staff are excited about it. The PTO is gracious enough to purchase the morning meeting book for every single one of the staff members at Woodsdale. And as we go throughout the next year, we will be using some of our staff meeting time as a professional learning community to take a look at ways that we are implementing it at Woodsdale, take a look, as I've mentioned to you in the past, at other districts that are using the morning meeting approach, and sending our staff out to observe what it looks like in a classroom that's been doing it for years, and taking some of those practices back to our building and implementing them, and seeing what works for us and seeing what doesn't, figuring out our own applications of it. So I think it's going to be really something I'm really excited about. Within goal one, we're also going to continue something that I've seen in place at Woodsdale, which is the Good Character Initiative. It is plastered all over that school, and I think it's a fantastic initiative. They are rewarding the students for citizenship, good character, and responsibility. And it's everything from a copy and good type of reward, but also something that if you're focusing the needs of your classroom around those three character traits that can connect to your day, can connect to the conversations that we're having in morning meeting. So, it's definitely something I'm excited about continuing. We're going to continue technology integration. We have a need for that in all of our buildings. I know at the Woodsdale School, we have been focused on making sure that some of the time our reading specialists are going to be spending with our students is spent using the technology that will be available to us within the new reading series. So, the Wonders program has fantastic tools so we can be tracking students' progress. We've also purchased something that will allow our students to progress their own readings. It's called Myon, it's from Scasta Company. So, the technology push is still there for us. I know it's connected to Peter's goals, it will continue to be connected to my goals as well. In goal number two, we're creating some opportunities for increased community connections. Couple of highlights there is something I've seen in practice, again, in my professional network. My mentor this year is Tony Keedy, the principal of the East Elementary School. He's got a fantastic function of his school council, where they run focus groups. They do it twice a year. They do it like a golden ticket where they just pull a random student ID, and they extend an invitation to that family to come and join in on those focus groups. The focus groups will be centered around the action items in this school improvement plan, and just some general ideas about how are we doing? What is our status at the midpoint of the year? What's our status as we're entering the spring? And really using that community feedback and that data from those sessions to implement some ideas into what will be my next school improvement plan. I was, again, happy to attend it. It was really fantastic, and I really saw the power of taking what we're doing in the school and connecting it to the members of the school community, and giving them their unfettered access to us. There was no judgment. As long as names and teachers and students weren't mentioned, it was just reflect upon how we're doing. So, I'm happy to open that up. For goal number three, providing a healthy and safe learning environment through effective leadership and operations. We'll be providing, continuing to provide meaningful enrichment programs, spreading our positive messages throughout the school about social responsibility and respect, and making sure that we're just keeping an eye on the physical space at Woodsdale, making sure the classrooms are outfitted with what we need, making sure that our staff's needs are met. So, that's a rough outline of my three goals.
Thank you. Responsive Classroom's a wonderful program. I'm glad to hear your training morning meeting.
In my practice as a classroom teacher, I've spent the last 10 years using it. It's, when I had conversations about implementing it at Woodsdale, took some feedback about what are ways that we can implement it. The staff's already kind of taking it and running with it a little bit. We've had conversations about whether I have to open my day with it. Can we do it at about 10 o'clock after we've had some academic time? So, just knowing that they're already thinking about how it's going to fit into their day and thinking about the applications of it is exciting to me as well.
That's wonderful. Sounds like a great start. Does anyone have any questions for Jonathan?
Just on goal number one, when you're visiting districts, have you chosen the districts you're going to visit yet, or?
Yes, I have. So, again, in Hingham Public Schools has been gracious enough to allow us an invitation to come and check it out. I have a friend who has just recently been named the principal of the Plymouth River School, so we're going to check that out. And I have a standing appointment, we haven't confirmed any dates yet, in Rockland. My prior administrator, my prior principal, had sent us to that district to check it out, so I'm looking to hope. She's told me she still has the same connection, still has the same classroom that'd be willing to host us. So, we're just, over the summer, I'll be processing those details and making sure I get our teams out there.
Jonathan, I had one on the, it was more on goal number two.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know, maybe there is something at Woodsdale currently, is there something like similar to the broadcaster that comes out of Beaverbrook, like as far as communicating regularly, because that's something that, one of the, I mean, I get a bunch of emails, but that's one I make sure I look at every time, so I don't know if there was something similar that either already exists there or that you're going to like bring that idea over.
Well, when I see the emails coming from Constant Contact, David does provide a weekly email so far this year at Woodsdale. So, I'm glad to hear you say that the feedback's positive about the Beaverbrook broadcaster. It's something Catherine and I put a lot of effort in. It's something that we try and make sure is current. It's something that we try and make sure is proactive. So, definitely yes to answer your question, Chris. I don't know what it's going to be called yet.
Yeah.
Play around this summer with it.
They'll call Beaverbrook Broadcasters.
I can't. I can't. I know. I don't know. I'm leaning Woodsdale Weekly, I don't want to get locked into anything. But yeah, I will make sure that there's a weekly communication. I see the power in it, and I'm glad to hear the feedback's positive.
I have a question that just, it doesn't pertain to this one.
Sure.
How are you going to handle when the kids leave after school? You know, about that yet?
We have, I've been, it was, yes, I have an handle. Making sure I don't speak before I'm ready to speak on that. I observed it in its current fashion at Woodsdale. I made sure that I got over there with David. We saw the end-of-day dismissal procedure. We had implemented something similar to close out the year at Beaverbrook so that our students would be used to that dismissal procedure. So, again, it's another piece that is in its final sort of processes of fine tuning and making sure it works for us. So, I guess more to come on that.
Anyone else?
You raise good points about the transition from three to four at one place to three to four. In another place, all of these types of things, pre-K through 12, there are fine points in detail that are being ironed out every day. Now that we have 3,800 boxes, right Felicia?
Approximately.
And they're packed and in the process of moving.
Plus totes.
Webpages, updates, times, everything, the title of the broadcaster, the dismissal procedure, those are all very good questions. Some we know, some we're pretty close to knowing. Thank you.
Yeah, and things like that that come up, I invite you to just keep reaching out. If I don't have an answer now for some of those things, as we progress towards our open, I for sure will.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next Catherine Zinni will present Beaverbrook Elementary Improvement Plan.
It will sound somewhat similar to Woodsdale's. So, before I begin with the Beaverbrook Improvement Plan, I do have some highlights of the past plan, so you can know some of our accomplishments. So, in the prior plan, the big piece to look at was the instruction. So, we focused again on co-taught classrooms, and the Department of Education on their monthly or every six-week visits commended us for our grade one and our grade two co-taught seamless practices. They couldn't tell who was a special education teacher or students and who was not. And Dr. Thomas was at our final DSAC meeting, and that was commented on again there as well, right?
Yes.
So, that was a huge highlight for us because that was new a couple of years ago, and we really worked hard on it, and it continues through grades three and four. Also, our differentiated instruction, we began the process of the Balanced Literacy Model through our pilot program, introduced two classes per grade to other classes viewing that is going to be school-wide and also be at the Woodsdale next year as well. So, moving on, another highlight for us, I'm glad, Chris, you mentioned the Beaver broadcaster. So, we publish that weekly, and that was part of our good citizenship and our communication skills that we were working on, that also tied in with our Beaver Best Awards, so kind of like cop being good. We had a character trade each month, and we strongly focused on it. We had announcements, we had prizes, we had people modeling. We will continue that again. Let's see, our Spirit Days, which was new this year, was that we had our third and fourth grade students vote on the Spirit Days, always with the idea that any of the choices they had were ones that we were okay with. So, they chose what the Spirit Days would be. Let's see. And we had many charitable activities, including two food drives, dog park support, and a helping Haiti support. One of our partnerships, Girl Scouts, I don't know if you came by in May, but our tulips were in full bloom. The Girl Scout troop came by and beautified outside of our school. And we're very happy that Jason Lynn has provided a lot of support. We have Wi-Fi throughout the building, and that was excellent because one of our huge pieces we worked on was our Boost-a-thon, which raised funding to have 75 laptop tablet convertible computers, charging carts, and surge protectors so that we could have power to actually use them. So, that was a huge accomplishment for us. So, those were some of the highlights, as well as a curriculum night in November, had one reading activities events as well, and MCAS support event also provided. That's the summary. Now, on to next year. As you noted, Woodsdale had three goals. We also have three goals, so if you go to page seven. And we limited it to three goals because we're really focusing on activities and ways to improve the school that the school can really do. Sometimes what's in a school improvement plan are items that we want, but we put them in there as placeholders so that we don't forget about them. But there are other locations for those, through school committee, through faculty meetings, through district meetings. We have a lot of meetings that we all get together in different configurations. So, just because you don't see things in the school improvement plan, it doesn't mean they're forgotten, it just means that we chose as a school council to focus on what could the school itself really do to improve ourselves. So, if you turn to page eight, goal one is providing rigorous, relevant curriculum and instruction in an optimal learning environment. And I also like to point out that midway through the year, center schools started joining us. So, we really had three school councils kind of going at the same time, a Woodsdale, a Beaverbrook, and a center, turning it all into one so that we could create the Beaverbrook School Improvement Plan, the Woodsdale School Improvement Plan, and then the preschool has its own school improvement plan. So, we have had a lot of people to work this out. And what we focused on, we will still have common planning and the basics, but if you turn to page nine, we decided to put in specifics that we are working on. And our two areas of focus are really in literacy. Keys to literacy, which we've had training on, now we want to make sure we're fully implementing and using it with optimal practice, and Focus K2, which is a communication type of curriculum and mindset, which is about students using thinking and feedback and critiquing each other, kind of like peer editing in the grown-up world, accountable talk in the high school world. So, we start that at kindergarten, which they have been successful in. We began the implementation in grades one and two this year, and we are going full force next year. So, if you make an appointment to come by, so you can see it when we're actually doing it, not at lunchtime or some other time, I know Miss Happel, you came last year to visit the school, you're welcome to come so you can see it in action and hear kids talk about what they're doing, why they did it, and how they need help, and then put the perseverance in to make the adjustments to improve whatever outcome they have. I know we have people in the audience, someone whose child uses thinking and feedback and such, and has expressed happiness over that. So, that is our big focus is literacy in the Beaverbrook. Going to page 10, our second goal, continuing the development of a positive climate and sense of belonging for the staff, the students, and the families. And one of the pieces the school council added was we wanted staff to staff, peer to peer, family to family, and all the mix of that in between. So, we've already started working on that piece. We are looking at continuing our Beaver broadcaster. Something we tried this year as a pilot that we will do is we have many students who come and go. So, we had 23 first graders enroll the last two weeks of August, first week of September last year, and another huge influx in grade three mid-year. We created, using our technology, an intraschool group where we send out an email to all the people involved, so specialists, special ed, English language learners, the secretary, the nurse, of our new students coming in, some basic information, it's just internal with us, so that when students register and they come in, they don't come in and say, "Oh, I don't have a desk," or "No one knows my name." People already know who they are when they come in, and that contributes to a welcoming climate. So, we piloted it, we're going to do that for everyone. We're very happy that the PTO, and thrilled the PTO has provided responsive classroom, something we were looking at at our school councils, was continuity between Beaverbrook and Woodsdale. So, responsive classroom, you already heard about it, so I don't need to say anything else. PTO provided materials for both schools, so when they leave Beaverbrook and they go to Woodsdale, they'll already be familiar with that, and that is a positive way to enhance students taking an active role in their accountability of themselves. In addition to that, center school uses bucket fillers. Are you a bucket filler or a bucket dipper? We're all bucket fillers right now. That just means that you're improving someone else's life and looking at someone else's perspective. So, PTO has been very gracious as well, so that we can tie in the bucket filler program, which is about making choices and looking other perspectives besides your own, and we're going to fuse that with responsive classroom and morning meeting. So, the kids coming from center school already have something familiar as well, but then we'll fade that as they move more towards character education at a deeper level at the Woodsdale. Does that make sense? Okay. And we'll continue with our digital literacy and citizenship with real-life experiences since we have this technology, to make sure they use it safely and wisely. All right, you're going to goal three, here on the page. Improve communication with the BBES school community, and as well as more local and global. So, in addition to our website and our Constant Contact, our Mind 101, use ClassDojo, many other ways, we're partnering with local cable. Justin has been fabulous already. Our goal in our school council is helping us find people. We are going to hopefully create some videos, which Mr. Hawes started this year, unexpected and unexpected behavior. We're going to continue that, so that before kids come to school, they can see over the summer, everybody watches TV, I believe, or most people, they can see, "This is how you enter school. This is what arrival looks like. This is what dismissal looks like. This is what it looks like to eat here. This is what it looks like to travel here. This is what it looks like to be a respectful, responsible, productive student." And we will have real people who are going into the school to do this, and we are hoping to do that over the course of the year. That's one way, because a lot of people move into that video realm, always with people who give permission, of course. And our other piece is we are going to improve our community volunteerism with our new Wonders program, with our Envision program, with our laptop tablet devices. We're looking to branch out. Many people volunteer just in their child's classroom or just for a special project. Our art teacher, our phys ed, health and wellness teachers would like to have some volunteers, and we're going to provide some sessions to help people learn what volunteering is and help people feel comfortable about when you volunteer. Here are some basic expectations that you should expect from us, we should expect from you, so when you come, it's not so scary. It's very different when you volunteer, you don't know where everything is like it is in your house. So, we are going to do that kind of as a pilot and see how it goes, so that we can have more people volunteering and coming at times that are beneficial to our students. Those are our main areas of focus. Do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
On goal three, number two, encourage open school-based communication to effectively address issues as they arise, and your indicator of accomplishment, first bullet is to follow the hierarchy of communication, a parent-to-teacher, then the administrator, then a principal, central office, et cetera. I'm just curious, between a teacher and the principal, who do you refer to as administrator?
Could be the assistant principal or the principal. Sometimes it could be a, we have some behavior specialists in the school, we have school psychologists. So, depending on how the parent communicates to the teacher is who we refer the parent to or the student for the next steps of whatever it is. So, we're trying to share with our parents, a lot of people don't realize, we have all these people in the school that support their child. It's not just the teacher, it's not just the principal and assistant principal. So, one of our ways to communicate is to let people know, we have all these other people that are part of your child's school day who can also help your child. A lot of people don't realize it, and we didn't know a better word than hierarchy that would fit within the template, that would communicate the levels of support that are there.
That's right.
Okay.
I just think hierarchy puts it out there almost like that this is the way, you know, we would ask you not to speak, you know. We do have all these layers. I actually like layers of support for your family better than a hierarchy of communication. It's just a...
We went through the source synonyms, and people agreed on that word.
Yep.
So, that's what we went with. That's really how that word came about. And it fit nicely.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Catherine, I have like two. I guess one off of this and then one just in general.
Sure.
And it's like the website, I know, like you go to Abington PS, you can select the schools. I noticed, and I can't remember exactly which schools, but the teachers have pages, but not all the teachers have pages. Is there, I mean, I mean, not a big deal, but is there a way to get to encourage them to all have a page, so nobody feels different, left out or whatever on it?
So, a piece of that is in the past, there were teacher webpages, but I'm going to have to refer you to Mr. Bukowski because he's going to present the technology, overall district plan, and there was a plan in that down the road. So, it's starting at the higher level and then going to the younger levels.
Okay.
So, it's about can a platform support all that, and do the teachers have the training to do all that at this time?
Okay.
So, I know that that is a district goal over time.
Okay.
So, we all want it, but we are not there yet.
Gotcha. And the other one is just in general, as a parent of somebody who started Beaverbrook this year, one of the most daunting things I found was going into the office, my son was late for school one day, and just not really knowing how that whole process worked. So, I didn't know if during orientation, let's say...
Or one of those videos of what to do, that's on our list.
Okay, I was going to say it could be something like, this is how you come in, this is what you need to do, who you need to talk to, that kind of thing.
That's exactly what we're looking to have. If you walked in today, you would see part of our plan already, there's a big blue bulletin board, and it has how to register your child, take one of these, this is what you do with it, this is where it goes.
Okay.
So, this week is our rollout of that, and how to come in tardy or dismiss your child is one of our hopefully future videos. Maybe you will want to be in it.
Yeah.
We'll show you how.
I commit to anything like that.
No, but let's throw it out there, we're looking for volunteers to model what we want people to know.
Okay.
So, that was a very good question.
Does anyone else have any questions?
You're giggling, I think you want to be one of these.
I already did it.
Yes, you did. There are more, that can happen. Anyone have any other questions or thoughts?
Thank you. Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay, and next we're looking at report of subcommittees. The first one is actually the reorganizing, reorganization of our subcommittees, and everyone got copies of the subcommittees and I accepted volunteers. We have openings. Jeanette said she would be willing to do Abington High School again as a school liaison, and if we had no one else, she would do the pre-kindergarten. And I think what's causing an issue with signing up for these is we don't have actual dates. So, I'm going to ask the two principals that are here, if we waited to fill some of these until the fall, when the date, the day of the week that the meetings were going to be held was available, would that work for you?
I can give you the date right now for the Monday, the first Monday of the month, except for September and January, the first Monday of the month is not your school day.
Chris, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I knew it was Monday, I knew it was the Mondays anyway, so, thank you.
I'm going to be for Wednesday.
I would do Woods, Woodsdale with the first Wednesday.
Okay.
I can't do Tuesdays, it's really hard.
All right, so Wendy will be your liaison. And Jeanette, is there a problem with you doing two schools, or?
Yep.
Because that's two extra meetings a month.
Fine.
All right.
Thanks, Jeanette.
Thank you. We do have one other, our Health and Wellness Subcommittee, we have not had anyone there for the last two months, and I'd appreciate if the committee would think about it and see if there's someone who would be able to do that. I believe their meetings are late afternoon or evening, I'm not sure.
How much lifting is there for that one?
Not much at all.
Where do they meet?
This is probably the best committee for you all to jump on.
Well, I would do it too.
All right. Mike, since you're not a liaison, why don't we put you on the Health and Wellness? Okay. All right, thank you to everyone for getting to me. And did anyone volunteer for something that I missed when I was looking at this? Okay.
Kathy, do we need to, do we need to fill the support staff one that's on there?
It's something that we don't have to fill tonight.
Okay.
Eventually, we need to fill it, but it does not have to be done right now.
Okay.
If that's something someone's interested in, they just have to send me a... If that's something someone's interested in, they just have to send me an email. All right, thank you, everyone, for volunteering to be on the various committees. All right. Superintendent Schools Evaluation for the Midyear Cycle Goals. He set, Superintendent Schaefer set his goals in January. We approved his goals. At this point in the year, it is up to us to let him know whether we feel that he is on track to complete those goals at the end of the year. And everyone has had a copy of this in their possession for a couple of months now, and I've heard no comments that anyone felt there was a problem. So I'm happy to tell Peter that he appears to be on track to complete his goals come December.
Yep, no, I agree. I think he's very well, he's great to meet all of his guys.
Any questions? Okay, if that doesn't... All right. Report of the Superintendent of Schools.
This evening, we have Richard Bakowski to handle this one for me, Director of Technology. We do get a load of the stuff that Rich and everybody has been working on.
All right. Thanks for giving me a little bit of time to talk about the tech at the Abington Public Schools. I figure I'll start with the question that's kind of hanging out there, that I'm sure everyone's waiting to hear the answer on. What we're talking about, as far as teacher websites right now, is piloting some learning management systems next year. Without getting too deep into it, a learning management system is basically an online way for you to teach your class. It can be used at different levels. For example, a high school science teacher could run their whole class through it, or you can just maybe put assignments and class information on there. We don't have anything in place now, but it's in the works, and in theory, it could be an entire district-wide initiative. And then that would give everybody a place to put their class information that would be accessible online. One of the issues now is there's so many options out there, different sites you can use, and a lot of people do ask me, what should I use? And it's hard for me to suggest things, because people are at different levels technology-wise, and creating a website can be kind of daunting. So assuming we decide learning management system's the way to go, which is still up in the air, but that would be a place where we can start to drive people to. That would be Abington branded, and everything would look kind of the same, and the hope would be, it would be an easy way for people to start getting their things online.
So...
And that's a question. And that is something we will be encouraging all staff, if we do go, that's right, we would encourage them. But very much like, and I'm going to say it, Parent Portal, it's gonna, it's up to the user, which would be the staff, the teachers, to be using it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we'll certainly do as much training as we can to make sure people are comfortable with it. But I can't speak to whether we can force anyone to use it or not.
Historically, what happened was websites became what people were using to communicate, and we didn't have a district platform for it. So people used what was available online to design their own websites. So that's why we end up with a variety of different type of things that people did on their own. The benefit of this is, there's a platform that people can use that will be consistent that the district will own. And one of the things that we need to do, and Jeanette is talking about another historical piece, and that is that we've got Parent Portal, and we've got mixed amounts of usage, and we need to increase it, or use it 100% across the district. It's also, next year's a negotiating year. It would be something that possibly could come up in negotiating, in terms of making it a part of that process. So we had a commitment that it would be used more consistently. I'd need a crystal ball to tell you how that would go, but it is the direction we all want to go in.
Any other questions on that one? Okay, so you have the Strategic Action Plan document in your packet. I'm not going to go through every line of it, but I will speak to a little bit of some of the changes that have happened in the past year, and the important highlights. I did notice today, as I was looking over it, that there are no page numbers, which made me feel like a failure, but fix that. All right, so...
Can I do it?
Right? So, page one, the strategic goal is to maximize opportunities provided by technology to transform teaching and learning. So in the first section, one of the things that we've been able to do this year is give all of our staff members a laptop device. So everyone who's a teacher and a tutor, this past week actually received a laptop to go home for the summer, to get used to using. And then next year, that will be the device that they can use in their classroom. In the new school building, that will be their direct teaching device, they'll plug that into their projector, and all the other cool technology that we have in that building. At Woodsdale and Beaverbrook, it'll be an additional device in their classrooms. Right now, they have three, so normally what happens is one of them ends up being dedicated to the teacher. Now they'll have the laptop that they can work off of, and now they'll have an additional computer device in their classroom that they can use more for their students. In the second section of page one, I did want to mention the convertible laptops that Beaverbrook had added. That's another great thing down there, for those kids to get a little more hands-on. We picked up devices that were convertible, so that they can use the keyboard, or they can use the touchscreen. At a younger age, the touchscreen is often a little bit easier for those students, so having those convertible devices was a benefit for them, I think. I'm going to skip page two. There is some lists of some of the software programs that we use on that page, but not much has changed. The next page, which is the goal of to maximize opportunities provided by technology to transform teaching and learning, and then the objective to develop and implement a technology literacy curriculum. A lot of things have changed there. The high school has added to their program of studies, two classes, an Exploring Computer Science and a Computer Science Principles, with Exploring Computer Science being the first step, and then the Principles being the second step. As a computer science major from college, it's exciting for me to see that that program's starting to take off, and that there are a lot of kids who are getting excited about that. And then at the middle school, there are a lot of additions as well. We've got a STEAM class that's being implemented, a digital literacy class, and adding a fifth and sixth grade technology class. Before, there was a seventh and eighth technology class, so it's going to be added as an additional option at that level. And then we're updating the seventh and eighth class to include a little bit more digital literacy information. The state has put out some standards that the state thinks we should follow, for students should know this at this age, and students should know that at that age. And so it gives us kind of a roadmap for what things we should hit at what ages. So we've actually had a few committees, a STEAM committee and a digital literacy committee, who have sort of gone through our curriculums, and sort of found places where we can add this technology already into the things that we're doing, as an easy way to make sure that we're teaching the kids the things that they should know as they're going through The next page, implementing appropriate professional development. This year was exciting for the technology department, because the first three professional development days were dedicated right for technology. So my department partnered with someone from Microsoft, and that person came in, and they trained our technology liaisons, which we have one at every school building, who was kind of the point person for technology instruction, and helping people do things in their classroom with technology. So they came in over the summer, and we did a couple of days of training, and then they delivered training over those three PD days to all of the staff in the whole district. So what we were able to do is make sure that we had a baseline for literally every staff member, nurses, teachers, tutors, parents, everybody, with how to do a lot of things in Office 365, which is really the basis of how we're delivering instruction, with using our email, and sharing documents, and all that stuff. So we know that all the staff that are in the district have a good handle on the tools that are available there. Before, people would, you know, they're going in, they're using their email, they're using the calendar, but they might not know about other things in there, like Sway, which is a presentation software, or OneNote, which is a notebook software, where they could actually run their whole class through that. So that gave them the opportunity to open their eyes a little bit to some of the technology that we were already using, but they might not know was available for them. And the next page, just see if I have anything highlighted, I do. On the third section of the next page, we added technology training provided at staff meetings, common planning time, and after-school. In the past, we were really focusing on voluntary trainings after-school. Sometimes the attendance was good, sometimes it wasn't so great. So what we sort of did is start to target staff meetings and common planning times, where you have a captive audience, to keep reinforcing some of the things that we did on those first three PD days, as well as to add additional things that might come up as the school year went on. I think it was very effective. People just don't know what they don't know, so even after a few minutes in one of those meetings, it might click with someone, oh, that would be really cool, I'd like to do that. And then often, there would be follow-up after those common planning times, for example, with the technology liaison for a little bit more information after that. So I think that was an effective change. Skip the next one, where it lists SharePoint. Now we're on the commit to a regular plan to evaluate, consider, and acquire emergent technology. Feel like we're getting closer and closer to really using effective technology. One of the measures that we had to do this year, that's listed here now, is MCAS testing online. We were required to do it for grades three and grades eight. It was nerve-wracking setup, particularly for the principals. The kids kind of took to it a little bit better, I think, than we thought they might. But I'm happy to report that it went very well, it went very smoothly. Years ago, when the state tried to implement PARK, it was really a mess. A lot of districts had a lot of trouble with it. They've ironed out most of the details on their end, and then we were able to, you know, with a lot of work from the principals at Beaverbrook, and Principal at Frollo, to really iron out the details, and it really went well. And to the point where, even though it's not required, I think the principals are going to start adding grades next year, because it ends up in the end being a lot easier for the staff members. And we didn't really have any trouble with the kids utilizing the tests online either. So that might be the last bullet that I wanted to show. Yep, that's the last thing I wanted to mention in the plan, but are there any other questions that you might have come across from things that you read on there?
I have a question on, I think page maybe four, so the one that says, implement appropriate professional development.
Yep.
And I think, to your point, kids adapt very easily to different things. I'm not surprised by that at all, that they didn't really have problems. I wonder, in the past, we have struggled with our teachers embracing technology. Would you say that we're at a better point? I just feel like we are so, we're moving so technology, it's so many great things happening. Do you see a difference in the...
I do, I think there's a lot more...
Enthusiasm.
Yeah, a lot more interest, especially after those first three days where we really focused on technology. There wasn't anything pulling them in any other directions, everyone was doing that. And so a lot of people have started collaborating with groups, fifth grade currently at Woodsdale, for example. They have a little SharePoint site that they start using, and they share documents, and they share communications all the time. It is still different levels, you know, for different people, but even, I spend, my office at the high school, so I spend a lot of time at the high school, and I hear people talking to the technology liaison all the time about, I want to try this, I want to try that. And so it's exciting to hear that. And at Frollo, the technology liaison had fourth period off, and he basically was tasked with finding people and going into their classrooms during that period and helping them, and that also was very effective. It only works if people ask, but he was busy all the time, because people were asking him to come into the room, so I think they're in the right direction.
Do we have plans, and maybe this is something for Dipno, for professional development, do we have plans to, almost as you said, because I think you need to, like a captive audience, continue that training for the teachers?
Yeah, we always have technology plans, and then we do different offerings, so some are going to be during in-service time, so we have that continued focus for next year. But also, we have people that volunteer to do trainings after-school in different buildings, district-wide, so we're giving them a variety of options. And then we send people out. I mean, there are other schools that are ahead of us, especially with the new building, you know, and so we're sending teams of people out, so they can take a look at, you know, how to learn from that, start to implement it, because that's also a huge learning curve for some. Some people, you know, are just technology-driven, but then there are always going to be some people that we need to key in on.
So the next generation of professional development in the area of technology will be effective classroom use in a one-to-one environment. So that, you know, we plan on buying a certain number of laptops for a certain number of grade levels, we'll know at the end of the project exactly what grades that will include. If we weren't doing that, and having one-to-one, meaning all the kids are going to have the hardware to use in classes, they still come with hardware, with the phones that kids have these days. And so using those to your advantage in a classroom effectively, not just using them because they're cool to look at, or because they do, the glowing box does cool things, but effectively that kids are using them with the assignments that they're doing, and the assessments that teachers are asking kids to do to demonstrate that they've learned something, and then working collaboratively in classrooms, and then with the teachers, really the next phase for us with our teachers.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Rich.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Miss Chu.
I have one more thing.
We have one more, we have one more question, too.
How about, um, the teachers' ability to access technology options that you need to know, how do you, I'm just not talking about laptop and all that.
Right, so at the, at the new building, we're adding IPTV system, which is a TV system where you can watch cable TV, you can watch online videos, things like that. That's new technology that we haven't seen before. Most people have document cameras now, but we're going to have them in every classroom. We'll have an interactive projector in every classroom. So I think the first, or early in the year, we actually have a PD day set aside, so we can cover some of those new things that people might not have a grasp on yet, and we can hopefully bring everybody up to speed then. So the other document that you have is the State of Technology document. It's not very long, but I'm not going to read every bullet again. I wanted to highlight the first three, because I think they're probably the ones that I'm most proud of. We already talked a little bit about the laptops. I think that will be a transformative thing for staff, especially as they learn to understand what it's like to have a laptop device in front of you in the class. It's obviously different from the front of the room than when you're sitting in the room, but understanding how the devices work, and understanding what the things that they can do with those devices is important, as they start to learn how to instruct the students on that. As I had mentioned, as of right now, we have 99% of the district, I think, with, I didn't really do the math, but it's pretty close to 99%, it might be even more. But we only have two rooms that don't have interactive projectors right now. And so with the fact that we'll no longer have classrooms at Frollo, and no longer have classrooms at Center, we can take some of those projectors, and we can put them in those last two classrooms, so then we'll be at 100%, which is great. And the wireless access across the district has been spotty for a long time. We've done a good job of updating Beaverbrook and Woodsdale in advance of this new building, because the 100% coverage of the new building comes with the building. So now, with that new building, we'll have 100% of all classroom spaces covered. There's still a couple of areas, like maybe a gym, or something like that, where we haven't hit it yet, but the plan is to get it all, so, but as of right now, all the classrooms are covered. And there's a few other cool things on there. I'm not going to read them all, but if you have any questions or comments about any of them, absolutely.
Can I just, Rich is being very humble. I need to say that over the last probably six months, his job has really been managing the technology that's in the, currently in the district, but also procuring all of the technology for the new, for 201 Glenoway Way, and also overseeing the installation, and working with the vendors on not just computers and access points, but also on a phone system that's upgraded, will be upgraded across the district, a radio system that will be used amongst the schools. So there's been a lot that's happened in his office over the last few months, and it was fun to say thank you.
You need a master's degree to run the stage curtains in the new building. You do. And I watched Rich stand there and troubleshoot it with the vendor who was installing it, just so he could get some extra time on how to run those. So really, everything he touches requires that.
We appreciate everything you do, Rich. I think there's more than one of you of those somewhere, did you clone yourself?
No, but that would be good, because I would go home.
And also say that he's being trained alongside Jason Lin, the Director of Maintenance, the...
and the custodial staff on all the building operation systems, the building management systems, so that there's, that one of the pieces of feedback that we've got from other schools is to make sure a number of people know how to use the systems. And it seemed a perfect fit that the Director of Technology, although not hands-on in the, you know, set points of temperatures involved in that, but to the technology itself. So Rich has been in all of those trainings as well.
Just a quick question on the print anywhere.
Yep.
Is it, is it required to have like a key fob code access to print out the actual document after it's sent to the printer, or is it prior to, prior to being sent, or...
So we, we're giving everybody in the district a fob. In the new building, the fob will open doors, but across the district, it will allow you to release your print job. So the way printing works right now is, I print a job, I send it to the printer, it waits on the printer, and I go and I type in a code and it comes out. The problem with that is that if that printer doesn't work, now I got to go back to my computer and I got to print it again. So this technology allows us to just basically print it to an interior cloud, a cloud that's inside of Abington, and then they can go to any printer in the entire district, hit their fob on the printer, and the job comes out. So if they forget, "Oh, I have to get that before this meeting," they can get whatever printer's close to them, if they go to a printer...
Or a coffee machine.
Or a coffee machine, that's right. We're setting up the coffee machines too, which we haven't in the past. They can go anyway. If I go to this printer, it doesn't work for whatever reason, it's out of toner, I can just go to the one down the hallway and get my print job there.
That technology is awesome, too. I, I've, hasn't made it to Boston's office for my work, but in New Jersey it did, and it was pretty awesome. You don't have to worry about anybody getting your stuff either.
Right.
If something's just personally seen, it's, yeah, you'll get it when you get there.
And if you're the person who's copying a million sheets of paper every day, we'll know.
True.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming tonight with everything else you do.
Yes. So, before I tackle the next item, which is consideration of an international trip, I wanted to ask the committee just to please be aware that at the last meeting, we talked about trips abroad, and the committee felt strongly that if a child was eligible for a trip and was eliminated because there wasn't room, that they should get first shot at the next trip. And in, in your packet, you've got how the high school put together a process for that. And, you know, I'll let you read that, I won't read it to you, but I believe that that last bullet under the lottery process is what the committee asked the high school to do. You'll, you'll let me know.
I think it is.
That sounds, it sounded to me like that's what we were looking forward. Does anyone else have a question about that?
I, and I don't know if Peter can answer this, and, you know, if it isn't, it can be tabled. You know, when they say lottery, is it a, true, they pick a name out of the hat lottery? What are, what are they referred to as a lottery? Can you speak to that?
I'm assuming, but I haven't been there for the lottery, that they take all of the eligible people, and there's a random drawing. I don't, you know, I don't know what, other than that, but that's, that's, that's my assumption. I haven't asked specifically about that, but names in a hat, names in a bowl, or paper, whatever.
I mean, that's what I would assume, too, but I'd like clarification that what we assume is what's actually occurring. I think the only other thing that I, I think we spoke about last time, and I know occurred this recent trip that we did approve, is that, that students, so for example, the trip to Costa Rica, I just have some numbers that I have reached out to Terry Sullivan about. So 43 students applied, they accepted 27. Two dropped off, so that, no, they accepted 25. Two dropped off. So we need to get to that 25 for the kids to be able to really afford this trip. It's that school, it's a group, which we want.
I believe you're right. The magic number is 25 to 27, because that gives you the cheaper rate, and it also assures you that your group is traveling alone, and you're not mixed with another school system that's on another, another trip.
Right, which we want. So then it went down, two students dropped out, they took two more from lottery, but then five of the 25 that are going were previously already traveled. So five students that didn't make the lottery, you know, I think this is what we were, you know, and that's just, I think, a concern. That would be my only question that we still kind of mull about and talk. Should we really be, should we be giving other students the opportunity for international travel as opposed to repeat, you know, you eliminate the students that are unable to travel maybe because of an attendance issue or, or some type of, whatever eliminates them from being eligible, but out of the ones that are left, I think we should give consideration to ones that haven't traveled previously to then accepting ones that have traveled. So if we're supporting this study abroad as a great experience, which I think we all are, I think we should be supporting it in a more equitable manner.
I don't have that level of detail that you've provided based on your conversation with Terry. I knew that 40 applied. In the end, there were 27. I believe that two dropped. I believe two were accepted by lottery. I didn't, I don't know about, I didn't, I know nothing about the five.
Yep.
And so Terry is, has a family commitment tonight. If this is something that weighs in on, I want to get answers to those things. I'm not equipped to answer that tonight. If that's something that weighs in on what we're about to talk about for the Greece trip, we don't, you don't need to consider the Greece trip tonight. That's up to the committee.
It doesn't really have any bearing on my decision about the Greece trip. I'm just saying in general, I think we should, I think we talked about that at our last meeting when it came up about allowing more children to experience that experience.
And Peter, just going back to that 27 number, out of those 27, 25 were accepted. Two dropped, so you took, 26 and 27 became 24 and 25. Those were the 25 that are going. And the two that dropped out, for whatever reason, they're eligible to go to the trip to Greece.
They would be, I would assume, number one and two of Greece.
That would, yes, that would be my assumption, too.
If they, if they dropped out, I don't, I don't know that they would or they wouldn't. I don't, I'm not saying, I'm saying I don't know. If they dropped out, that seems different than what people were talking about before, because I took myself out of it. That doesn't mean I wasn't accepted because there wasn't room. I think what the committee was interested in is if you weren't accepted and you were eligible and there wasn't room.
I guess I'm just going to beat this thing to death.
And I'm not, and I don't have any answer for it. I'd rather tell you I don't know than pretend.
If there were 27 that were eligible, why not take the full 27 to begin with?
Well, and I think there had to have been. If 43 applied, I can't imagine that we had, you know, that many that we eliminated right off the bat for reasons that whether, and I've seen the letter. It states attendance, disciplinary actions, you know, it lists the reasons why you might not be considered. I think that's a large percentage to think that we, that they got knocked out right at the top.
But if you, I do know this, some of the applicants are actually, you know, non-responsive. You know, "Why do you want to go to Greece?" "Well, because I liked the movie, Grease." And so, I mean, some kids don't put a real application in.
Right, so those, that to me is almost like, we eliminate that.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Those are limited, but those are in the 43. I mean, some are like, you know, "I really wanted to go, and I'm going to fill out the application process, and in the end, I really don't have the money, so, you know, I'm, I'm really not putting forth my best work when I fill out the information."
The other, I think, which I spoke to you about and I spoke at the last meeting about is that, you know, the anonymous feedback from teachers. I really feel that if they're giving feedback on students' ability to represent us abroad, that it should be, if they're giving, they should be able to put their name to it. I strongly feel that taking anonymous, because to me, once you get to letting it be anonymous, it loses its objectivity.
I think it should be confidential, but I don't, but I don't think it should be anonymous. Any kind of anonymous comments can, yeah, to me, it's suspect.
Confidential to who? Can I just clarify that?
Well, just as our student...
Stay within the school.
I don't think we need to put in the Mariner.
No, I mean, if a parent called and said, "Well, I didn't, my child, why wasn't my child selected?" If it's confidential, if you called me and said, and I was the principal...
If I want to know about my own child, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the only place that I just, that, I was wondering what direction you would think.
Again, though, I think if a teacher is commenting on a student and it's your child, they would, they would be comfortable standing in front of you and saying, "You know what? I do find so-and-so to be this way in class. I find her to be disrespectful. I find her to be, you know, whatever it may be." I mean, that's kind of what they do at parent teachers, you know? We, they, we ask questions, and they, you're hoping that they're honest and open and telling us exactly what's there.
So, you know, obviously we need more discussion on the selection process.
I just have one last comment, not, not, not just in general on the international trips. They really should, we really should have information, I think, by the April school committee meeting so that we're not, like, rushed to make decisions. So if we have all the information for the following year's international travel, we can get it in April, we can think about it and make a decision in May. Because making a decision in June, there's really nobody here, there's no administrators. And I realize that, I mean, there were circumstances, but, I mean, even some of the chaperones, you know, I mean, at the end of the school year are going to show up, so, I mean...
And how, like, some kids might say, "Oh, I'll go on Costa Rica," and then they find out about Greece, and now they want to go to Greece, you know?
That's happening.
So that's, must be huge.
That's happening right now.
Yeah.
So what happened in this case was Scandinavian trip only had 15 kids that wanted to go. That drove the price up $1,000. It was already about $5,000. That brought it to about $6. And they checked with those 15 students and said, "Would you want to take an alternative trip? Greece is much more affordable at $29,000. This would, this would..."
$29,000.
I'm sorry.
Wow.
Yeah, no, it's not more affordable at $29,000. It's more affordable at $2,900. And then they believe there'll be 10 to 12 more that will go to get that, to that magic number, so they can travel along. And for example, they don't know the exact dates because they'd want to, they have to wait till they arrange the airfare, but they know this would take the air travel, but they know this would take place over the April break.
So actually, out of these 27, the 15 Scandinavian kids are already gone. Is that what you're saying?
The 15 kids from Scandinavia want to go to Greece.
So they, they get, so they get first, is that...
I believe. They're already eligible. They already...
Well, I mean, if you followed this, that third bullet, then they are the first ones eligible. That's the way I'm taking it.
So, certainly...
Well, not really, because they were selected. I think they need to add some, because it says, "Students who are not selected in the lottery will be the first selected," but it's, they were selected, it's a weakness of their trip.
Right, we all decide. They, they decided with us, though, we don't want to do that for that much money. We don't have enough people.
Karen said.
Whomever. Everybody's in agreement. They don't want to go to the expensive trip. So that's how this came about at the last minute. And again, you don't, you don't need to consider this tonight. If you feel comfortable considering it, that's up to the committee.
I mean, I could consider the Greece trip tonight, but I definitely think that we need more feedback, and so, you know, somebody to show up, and I know it's like, they're in school, and stuff, but, you know, that's why them saying it, occurring in April, that way we know exactly what kind of trips, because do some of the kids find out, "Oh, we're going to go, they're probably going to plan a Costa Rica trip in, you know, September, October," and then they're already deciding to do that, and then when does the next trip come about? It just seemed like it was, you know, we had the Arizona, right? Is that it? The Arizona trip?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the number of kids are that are involved in that.
Right, you asked about that one also. There isn't that much interest. It's not deciding that whether it's a trip.
So, if we did look at this tonight, and we did approve this tonight, when would the students be given an opportunity to get information on this and sign up for it?
Either way, it would be next year, because the students will be meeting over the next two and a half months. Our committee meeting is the day, is really the first day of schools open, so...
That's unfortunate, just again, in the planning process. The students pay on a payment plan, and they've already, like the Costa Rica children, have already started paying. So that's going to, you know, these families are then, you know, you're two payments behind to, you know, a lot of that people being able to afford it as a family unit.
No, and I know, I know kids work and save money for this. I know people give them as gifts, money toward this at the holiday time, a birthday, or, you know. So I know that they hit up their extended families, too, for money to do these things.
I just don't want to get in the habit of feeling we have to, they have to take two trips. You know, the Scandinavian, it was a great idea. We approved it. It didn't, it didn't get the students, I guess, you know, interest. So then, you know, I almost feel like this was like, okay, well, we've got to fill it. You know, I think it's, it's a, I mean, I think when we first started, there was one trip a year. I don't think we need to feel like they have to be going twice. That's why I think this feels kind of late, like it was created right after they found out Scandinavia didn't happen.
This was done late. This was as a result of that falling out.
Right, yeah.
Does the committee want to put it off till our first meeting, or do you want to consider it tonight?
I just think it's really not fair to put it off. If we're going to, at the end, approve it just for the students and the families, out of respect for them, to like, really give this some thought and be able to consider it, you know, if there's any way that we can do it now, so day one, you know, because if we don't do it, if we don't vote on it to the night of day one, then it's even a couple of days, and that first week is short, you know, then we...
And for that matter, if we approve it now, and students are interested in going, even if the application process hasn't happened, they might have summer jobs and be able to save money toward it.
Right. And then you have those 15 kids that at least now...
That are already thinking.
Could be doing it.
Yep.
I like the...
Does anyone have questions on, on the trip itself?
I don't know.
My only question was the vagueness of the dates, but Peter answered it.
They just, yeah, if they need to know the air connections and all of that, but that's, that's the April break, will be the April break.
So, if we are going to take this under consideration tonight, we would need a motion, a motion to approve the international field trip in April 2018 to Greece for juniors and seniors who meet the criteria as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Can we...
Okay. It sounds like it's unanimous.
Can we maybe note that we should be revisiting the selection process?
Yes. They've got like four notes on it.
Thank you.
All right. Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. So it's that time of the year where we're basically getting ready for the extended school year program. This program, you hear about every year, we're all getting ready. Sarah McGinnis is our director, once again this year. She's great. She's been doing it now for a few years. And this program is for students that qualify under special education to avoid regression. And we have approximately 140 students that qualify. And then I'll let you know, you know, as I do an update and basically review of how the summer went regarding how many students actually attended. But for qualifying, you know, there's the eligibility process regarding special education, and then we also, depending upon need, provide transportation. So it'll start July 10th, it'll go to August 3rd, sort of 8:30 to 12:15. And it really, every year, the kids love it. So we're lucky, as, as much as it's a summer school program, the teachers really try hard to make it engaging, engaging so that kids, you know, basically, we're keeping them at their academic skill level to avoid the regression, but they're also having fun. So, we've received a lot of positive feedback in... So we've received a lot of positive feedback in prior years, and I'm hopeful that it'll remain that way. We have varying disabilities, so basically, there's a lot of work that goes into it because there's a lot of varying kids that come and access our programs through our teachers, but also all of our service providers as well. So I'll let you know how it goes at the end of the year, I mean, at the end of summer. And then if, you know, if you hear anything or positive as well as negative, you know, always just call me, email me, et cetera.
Can I just go one thing, and it has nothing to do with the, like, the program itself? I've told you before how great I think it is. It's more, the first day, first couple of days, when you show up there, it's complete chaos. I'm talking Beaverbrook. I don't know. I'm talking at the Beaverbrook. I didn't know if there was a better way to organize where, because right now, it's essentially, the teachers are standing out there with a sign with who they are, because not everybody knows who they are, because it's not the teacher they had. And you're looking, and there's all these kids, and you're at the front step of Beaverbrook, so you're in that little parking circle. And I don't know if there's any way to somehow get them into the school and then maybe have something listed where they should go, just something a little more organized when you first show up.
Yeah, I could talk to Sarah McGinnis regarding that. And we can see, a lot of it is like all the vans, all the transportation. There's a lot more kids than there are staff.
Yep.
So there's that. It's because it's in that circle where you do, and you can jump into with the transportation, but, you know, it's, it's almost like that safe zone.
Yeah.
But sure, I mean, we can see if maybe they enter through the cafeteria or they enter, is the gym the cafeteria? We could possibly do that.
And I will meet with Sarah and look at that, not the typical, but part of the problem is that we have 80 students coming in on vans. So if we move the staff into the gym, for example, there's no one to get those students off the vans.
Okay.
So, let me look at it and see, and, you know, maybe it's, once there's five kids.
I mean, yeah, and maybe he has an idea. Maybe it's too late now, but is there a way, like, in the last, in the middle of August, we get something home with who our teacher is, who the student teacher's going to be for the following school year? Is there a way to let the summers, kids going to summer school know who their teacher is? Because right now, they go there, they don't know who their teacher is, so the teach, so you're going up, do you have my child, you know, they don't know who to look for even. There's a teacher's name, but you don't even know...
And the grade that they're teaching.
Right, yeah.
They might know the teacher as a second grade teacher, but they're teaching fourth grade.
I don't know if there was a way to send something home, like, I know there was, there was stuff with the report cards that came home. Is there some way with that or email, or anything, that kind of thing?
Yeah, the only thing that's hard with that is that it's, it's so based on numbers. So even with our staffing, we're down to like the wire on who exactly we need for staffing, and we're always meeting. I mean, we just met with her a week ago. She was down with us, because it might be something else comes up, or a student moves in and we have to hire another para, or you know what, five students moved out, so we don't need that para. Or we're combining teachers and doing different models. We're looking closely at those really severe components regarding the behaviors regarding, you know, speech, language, OT, PT, you know, all of it. So we certainly can try.
Can you tend to email out, like, the teachers?
Not necessarily have those, and like Devin said, they are being adjusted right up to the end. But one thing that we absolutely could do is have grades K-1, 2 on one side along the sidewalk, you know, 3, 4, 5 along the other sidewalk, so every, because everyone is congregating right in front of that door. So if we spread it out maybe on the grass, that, that might, at least for the first couple of days.
I mean, yeah, because after the first couple of days, you pretty much know, you know what you're doing after that. It's just that initial.
But if we split it even in half and had, that might be a... Let me talk to Sarah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good feedback. And also, we have had people that ask, you know, like, and over the course of the years, we're like, okay, it's, we think, do you know what I mean, tentatively, but this is the best, because their students are anxious, or their kids are anxious about something. And so we've done that over the years.
I can relate.
But at the same time, when I say to Sarah, "Okay, Sarah," and she's nervous to hit send to me back, because, okay, today it's that, but if we get an influx or a change, we're shifting people.
Teachers adding or leaving.
Right, right. Because it's not like the school year. I mean, you know, the teachers that are coming.
Right, yep, I got you.
You know, 180 days, they're working, they're contractual, but with, with the summer, it's such an as-needed basis. Yeah, so, but we appreciate the feedback. We will try.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and see how it goes. All right, so, the next is the professional development, and I'm not really going to give an update because you've been hearing it all year, but I just really want to extend a thank you to everyone because this has been such a busy year that not only do we have many initiatives going on and a lot of PD and prep, but simultaneously, everyone's getting ready for the transition, the change to the new building, and with that, so much work goes into that as well. So I think that we've been really efficient in really, you know, capturing every second that we could possibly get out of a school day to get everything done. But it's been an enormous amount of work on teachers as well as the department heads, the directors, because they're working as well as also getting everything ready to move or shift. So that's been trying, but great experience. Everyone's so excited. And then simultaneously, they've also, you know, we have a huge compliance, you know, audit that's heading our way, and we already started it this year. It's our coordinated program review. And that happens every six years. And then, so you have that on top of it all. So next year will be the visit, and so we'll be having a lot of work in the compliance area where we'll be training people and working with people and reviewing everything, and then they'll come to visit in March. At the same time, we're also preparing for our NEAS self-assessment. And that's a major undertaking, and then as well as NIAC at the preschool level. So we have a lot going on, but I do want to just take the time to thank everybody because I know they're all gone out for the summer. They're probably not even watching this. But the bottom line is, you know, we couldn't do it without all of them, and they've done an enormous amount of work, both professional development as well as everything else. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you. All right. Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
I think we're opening a school in a couple of months.
You better be.
We are opening a school soon. So on June 1st, we took substantial completion of 201 Glynnowits Way, which means that 98%, 99% of the work is complete in the building. And that just, the substantial completion means work is completed sufficiently that the owner can occupy and use it for its intended purpose. So the, it is a school. And I'm also happy to report that over the last three weeks, we've received about 95% of the furniture and equipment. So you walk through the building, classrooms have desks, teacher desks, technology has been hung, cafeteria tables are in place, trash barrels are there, so it is a school. And we are, again, working very closely with our town officials, the health agent and the building commissioner, to get temporary occupancy, and we're hoping that that will happen in the next week or so. They have been touring the building and identifying things. It's a, of course, it's a little bit different when you have the old school, you know, 25 feet from the new building. So, but we are still anticipating having summer school there on July 10th, so. And you probably have noticed that the gymnasium next to, or attached to, Abington High School won't be attached very much longer. They've been doing abatement work in there since, right after graduation. And they have equipment set up. I saw on the way down here today that they will be starting to take that building down, the gym section. Because remember, the gym section has to come down in order for them to complete the bus loop in the front. So people have asked, it is not a wrecking ball. It's taken down in stages. And it is, the materials are separated and recycled. A very large percentage of, of the materials that are taken down of the building are recycled. We do have our yard sale scheduled for July 8th, and we will continue to advertise that through Constant Contact. It'll be on the end of this, the sign at the end of Glynnowits Way. Anything, mostly furniture will be available for sale. Desks, bookcases, cafeteria tables, things that are not going to be reused in other parts of the district. And other, like we talked about earlier, other departments, other schools and other departments in town also have an opportunity to come through and identify the things that they would like. And we are on schedule and we are on budget, so it's a, it's a very exciting, obviously very exciting time. And again, the amount of work that's being done this week. This week is the week that the technology's being, starting to be pulled out of the old building. Any of the furniture that we're reusing in the, in 201 Glynnowits Way or in other schools is being moved. The maintenance crew, the custodial crews there, they are, they are working very hard. And we have the official movers from Wakefield movers will be arriving on Friday to start the big move. And that's, that's, it's just been, everyone across the district, teachers, professionals, secretaries, principals, have just worked incredibly hard over the last few months to get ready for this.
As people are aware, we're not just moving into the new building. Kindergarteners, kindergarten is moving, grade 1, 2 is, you know, moving from one part of the building to another. 3, 4 is moving, 5, 6, I mean, every, you know, the entire...
Every classroom.
District is moving, so.
It's exciting. I have, I also have for you three proposed job descriptions that I'm looking for approval of for the food service department. This, these are more, these are capturing some of what we have been doing and in terms of job responsibilities, and also what Bernie Darcy, the food service director, his visions for next year. So the first one is the supervisor lead cook. That position had previously been the manager, kind of the responsibilities of the manager at, at Abington High School. The, this has, this job description has some more responsibilities as they, and those job descriptions were pre, a number of food service directors ago. So this new position, the supervisor lead cook, is going to have more responsibilities in terms of menu development and really supervising the kitchen at 201 Glynnowits Way. And that, as of right now, the kitchen at 201 Glynnowits Way is going to make meals, breakfast and lunch for two, for all the students at 201 Glynnowits Way. So that's, and that's seven hours a day, and the dollar amount is based on the manager's hourly rates that were already listed in the contract. I think if we go through the three of them, and then you can go back and vote on them, if that's okay? The second one is the supervisor cook at the Woodsdale. The Woodsdale School cafeteria next year is going to produce a majority of the food that will be, then be shipped to Beaverbrook for next year. So that's a change from what we've been doing in the past years. But Bernie feels that four grades being produced and moved from, from Woodsdale is, will work, and that's what he thinks is most efficient. This position is a supervisor cook at Woodsdale, six hours a day. It's approximately $2 more an hour than currently in their contract of, of a worker. So these, that position will be, will be filled by someone who is already in the food service program. Currently. The third position is a supervisor, and that person's a six-hour position, would oversee the breakfast and the lunch program at Beaverbrook, but wouldn't have the responsibilities of, of producing the meals as they do at the Woodsdale. So the dollar amounts are a little bit more. It's about $1.50 more an hour than the worker is now. And there, again, is also someone who, who is in that position and fulfills much of those responsibilities now at Beaverbrook. So really, the only new one is that supervisor lead cook. And I'd also like to take, to take this opportunity to, as we're talking about the manager, Ginny Coburn, who has been the manager of the kitchen at Abington High School for over 40 years, is retiring. So we wish Ginny the best and best of luck, and she's hoping to come back and substitute for us, so we're excited about that. But with that retirement does provide us this opportunity to restructure a little bit.
Do we need to vote these separately?
I don't, I'm not sure that you do. I think you can, I think you can vote all three together, right?
Does anyone have any questions?
So with the new supervisor lead cook position, that adds about $42K to the budget?
No, no, it's about $24,000. Six hours, seven hours a day, $20 an hour, 180 days.
Okay, I had 360 days.
Yeah. And it's already being, that doll, those dollar amount, that's already being used.
This doesn't increase the, this doesn't increase the full-time equivalency. This better describes what needs to happen in people's roles.
They're already paying someone.
Correct.
We're just replacing that retiree.
Correct, with a different job description.
Does anyone else have any questions? All right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the three job descriptions that were just presented.
I'll make that motion.
And the hourly rates.
And the, excuse me, and the hourly rates.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? All right, unanimous?
Thank you. And my, my final is, I'm requesting a transfer of $125,000 from the expense account line of the school department budget to the salary account line of the school department budget. That's the best estimate that we have today. It may adjust a little bit up or down, but if, if it adjusts up, we'd be coming back. But that's the best estimate that we have right now to, as we call it, land the plane at the end of the year.
All right, any questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion to transfer $125,000 from the expense account line to the salary account line as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Closed? All right, unanimous?
Felicia, I have one request. For August, could you bring the totals for what the recycled bins, the base day recycling...
Absolutely.
...for the school, did for the school year?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Felicia, what happens to those at the schools that are no longer going to have people there? Like center schools, bins?
Yep, that, I'm sure the company won't want to keep them there. And the money goes to the PTO of that school.
I know that, yeah, I know that part.
Yeah, so we'll have to find a place up here at 201. Although the one at Town Hall is actually done okay, because I think people go and drop off their books, drop off their clothing, recycling, but I'm sure we'll, we'll be trying to find a place. And what has happened all along is the one on Adam Street at North School is the highest collection of all of them. I think it's just the easiest access. People see it, "Oh, there's a bin. They can drop it off."
Yes.
And we'll, yep.
Such a great thing for us.
All right. New business establishing of next school committee meeting date for Tuesday, August 29th, 2017, at 7:00 PM, Abington High School. Room to be determined. Peter and I were looking at the layout of the new building to see what room was the best to use for our school committee meetings.
I need that conference center.
I think he means the seminar room.
Oh, seminar room, yeah.
Seminar room.
All right, dates to remember?
Dates to remember, the 4th of July, all school buildings and offices will be closed. On August 23rd, we have our new teacher orientation day. On the 28th, our teachers meet at Abington High School. On the 29th, our students return, grades 1 through 2. September 4th is Labor Day, and then September 5th is the pre-K kindergarten opening.
Can I just correct you? Grades 1 through 12 are returning on August 29th. You said 1 through 2.
Oh, sorry. 1 through 12.
And Peter, if anyone's interested in the joint conference, we get a reduced rate. We register by July 15.
I will be going.
Me too, but I can only go two of the days? Does that matter? It doesn't matter. I think it's one rate.
It would be nice if there was someone else on the committee that wanted to go the other two, though. They could share, the, it could be shared.
Just let me know.
Okay, I could do the Wednesday and Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Wendy.
All right, anyone have any other comments, questions? All right, we have a second question. In September?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have that right. Do you have that in your mind? Yeah, we actually moved it up.
If not, it's on our website.
It is, right on the link.
Thank you very much.
It's like a Thursday, I think.
September 14th. In service earlier this.
That's, we moved that up because of all the new tech and everything at the high school, in the middle school and the preschool, all in one building, so. Any thoughts, concerns?
I'm actually concerned about your meeting next week, because we think people are going to be exhausted on the first day of school.
Yes.
And yet, we always meet on the first day of school. And yet, we always meet on the first day of school.
And I always ask, why do we do that?
Was there another question? Yes.
I'm a parent, and I just saw the time adjustments for next year, and I'm very concerned about this compromise and the lack of, before school, probably, it's stressing, I should take that. These, our time is around, there's two ways, and it's been like 15 minutes, you know, to get to work, or lose my job, and I'm wondering about the voting process.
So, we, can I?
Yes, please.
We talked today about extending that time to a 25-minute prior to the start. Which building does?
My son will be attending Woodsdale.
So, that one is 8:30, we pushed it?
It starts at 9:05.
Right, but there's a breakfast that would be?
8:45. Bernie emailed me.
We pushed it earlier.
It changed today.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, I just, I didn't want to say it until I knew what was going on here.
8:40. We pushed it to 8, we pushed it back to 8:40, or earlier.
8:30 at Woods, 8:30 at Woodsdale, 8:40 at Beaverbrook, is what Bernie emailed, that's what he told me, too, on the phone.
Let me just find the email I just sent this afternoon, I think that's...
I'm sorry, do I?
Yeah, no, no, I hope that helps you.
It's just, you know, in a single parent, no other, like, options, panic, so I wanted to be here to express it as fast as possible.
Woodsdale, you're, thank you, Chris, 8:30 will be that breakfast program. Beaverbrook is 8, Beaverbrook's 8:40, Woodsdale's 8:30, middle school 7:46, high school 7 o'clock.
There'll be a breakfast provided to the students.
Yeah, because I, I was doing that at Beaverbrook, 8:30, and they gave me an open window to